Council, could we please rise for a moment of silence and then Mr. Singer will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mr. McEwen?
Here.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle Sings?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Singer?
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is approval of two sets of minutes on for December the ninth and January the sixth. Our special meeting, is there any problem with approving those two with one?
Motion, ma'am.
Motion by Ms. Tackett?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, thank you very much. See us show hands, please, as you did receive your check registered. Deal. Okay. Public comments, four minutes. Uh, Mr. Douglas?
So, Mayor and the council, John Douglas, I come before you this evening to request your approval for our Mon- uh, NAACP Martin Luther King March. Uh, this year, we're planning to march starting at the Georgetown College off of College Street. We'll travel from College Street going east to Military, turn left on Military, move up to, uh, Main. We'll follow Main Street all the way down to Broadway, turn left on Broadway, and come back to College Street, and then from College Street back to our starting point, and that's starting at four o'clock. And so I request the council approval.
You are ordering good weather, too, aren't you?
I am ordering weather better than what we got yesterday. Can't promise that.
We do that.
Is that for Monday?
Monday.
Monday, Monday, the, uh...
Motion, ma'am.
Motion by Ms. Tackett and second by Kelly. Any discussion?
Yes. I'm gonna need a special events request.
Okay.
Because that is a state highway.
We will get that, then.
Make that motion based on special request, yeah, special on the highway.
Form's on our website.
It is on our website. Do you have access to the web?
Uh, yeah.
I think you didn't know what the form is. There's...
I know you gotta, it used to be the handle, but I know the person, but I know what you're talking about.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post, thank you.
Okay, one other thing I'd like to invite here, uh, the whole council, everyone, to the march itself. And after the march, there will also be a program at, uh, St. John's, uh, Catholic Church, starting at five o'clock. Uh, open, so everyone, please come out and entertain. Entertainment will be a, uh, jazz band. Would you give a jazz, uh, concert at the time along with a, uh, student from Scott County doing a monologue for Martin Luther, Martin Luther King, Jr. And, uh, to have time on Saturday, we're having our second annual Martin Luther King Breakfast, uh, NAACP, and that will be at nine o'clock at the, uh, Thompson King Conference Center. At nine o'clock. So if you can spare your time this weekend, please come on out. It's fifteen dollars a dole. And come on and have a good breakfast and a good motivational speaker. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, John. Ms. Whitehouse?
Hello, um, I am requesting that, um, I, uh, we, okay, let me start over. I'm requesting that, uh, my Haiti team from Georgetown Baptist Church, um, have a 5K in downtown Georgetown on March twenty-second, and I have a special events request form filled out. I just need to send it to you on the email, so...
Which they all need to have it before we can approve it.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, does that go down of Main?
I've never actually run the course before. I've just seen, but it's the...
Does that course go down Broadway or Main?
Yeah, it just stays right around the college.
Okay, I'll put it in their next packet.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question, then. We didn't have one for the march, so we need one for that before we can approve it as well, or...
We are, well, I'm gonna send it out to you when he gets it to me, okay? You're approving it pending his paperwork.
So we do the same thing with, with her?
And I'll send it to you, sure.
Okay.
Is that a motion for approval there, Ms. Finn?
Approval pending the application.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tackett. Any further discussion?
What date was that? I'm sorry.
March twenty-second.
March twenty-second. It's on here. You're gonna run, aren't you? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Mayor's comments. Welcome back. Hope we have an outstanding year. I know it's election year, and wish all of you good luck. And that's all I have to say. Okay, city attorney, city clerk, municipal order approving grant application guidelines, which were mailed out to you. Go ahead and read those. This is, this is pretty important.
An order establishing a policy for grant applications procedures. Whereas the city Georgetown desires to establish certain policies for city departments and component units that wish to submit grant applications, now therefore it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that, one, for grants that require no matching funds from the city or a component unit, a department shall not be required to obtain council approval prior to applying for grant funds, unless such preapproval is a condition of the grant application. Two, for grants that require matching funds from the city or a component unit where the amount of matching funds is included within a department's approved budget, a department shall not be required to obtain council approval prior to applying for grant funds, unless such preapproval is a condition of the grant application. Three, for grants that require matching funds from the city or a component unit where the amount of matching funds is not included or is greater than the amount included within a department's approved budget, a department shall be required to obtain council approval prior to applying for grant funds. Four, in all cases, council approval shall be required prior to accepting any grant award, regardless of any preapproval given. Five, department directors shall keep a current list of all grants applied for and received, which list shall be made available for council's review upon request.
Is that, uh, included within the department's approved budget on point two? By the way, aye?
Aye.
Is that, hi Stacy?
Yeah.
Is that included, when you say included within the department's approved budget, does that mean that it is already lined out in the budget?
If they have, well, it could mean two things. It could mean something they've, know they're gonna apply for, and they request that match to be approved in their budget upfront. It could also mean, um, if, according to our budget policy, they can make line item transfers in their budget up to ten thousand dollars within their own department. So they, if there's something they particularly want to apply for and say it has a small match, they could reallocate those funds within their department of, of what you've already allocated to them. But that would be what that means.
But would that require them to have a line item already in their budget for grants? Or do all of our departments, our, our departments don't all have those?
No, it would be if they decide to, um, you know, if they have some sort of expendable supplies budget and they decide that they feel they can take two thousand away from them to provide for the grant match, then we would let them do that.
Shouldn't there be a, instead of how, if that's, number two's gonna stay in there, instead of how it's phrased, that shouldn't it be, um, some type of money not to exceed X amount of dollars as the line item that they can swap is ten thousand dollars, and shouldn't that be included in there not to exceed?
Well, we have a budget ordinance, which ordinance is a higher level than this, that says you can transfer more than ten thousand without council approval.
Uh-huh, but then if someone was looking at this and wasn't looking at the budget, I mean, it's, it's duplication of the process, but clarification of the process.
Let me clarify, number two.
I, I guess my question is still if there's not a line item in their budget for grants, how would they make that change, even if they did have an expendable supplies, whatever?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a grant line item. Let's say it's, uh, police were getting vests, and they required vests, and they could use, you know, transfer it from supplies to uniforms. So they probably already have an account that exists for whatever they're purchasing. They have, most of them have equipment accounts or vest, uniform accounts, that type of thing, so they can transfer from whatever they feel they can spare money into, say, uniforms, equipment, et cetera, up to the ten thousand dollars as well. By council transfer.
But even if, after all of that said and done, at the end of the day, it still has to come for council approval.
To be accepted.
To be accepted, and we would know about
Right.
where that suspendable money came from, how much that match was, and all of that. And we could always deny it if we didn't think it would be.
Except new revenue, we had to put it in the budget.
This is basically to apply.
Yes, this is how...
Yeah, but some of those applications are pretty extensive. That's, that's the only thing. I mean, if, if it was something, I believe that it was something that council felt strongly against, you know, even, even if they had the money in the budgets to be able to, to, to finagle, I, I'm, I'm not sure how I feel about that, to be honest with you.
I may, I think David, David can remember, too, that in the past, back, that you used to just, they applied for the grant and didn't come to the council first, but part of the problem, what you're saying, came about that the council was then not approving some of the grants, so they had spent all the time doing the prep work, and then the council said no, and I think that's why it kind of changed over time, if I'm not too mistaken.
When there, I think there are certain grants that they can apply for where if they're declined after they're awarded, that kind of, that kind of goes against them if they want to apply for them the, the next year and the next year after that, so...
We just didn't have anything formal in place, and we've had a couple of departments on it that have applied, and, you know, some come asking for approval, some, even I found out after they've applied, so we were just trying to get some guidelines in place, that we really didn't have anything formal in place right now. So this was our first stab at that, if you will.
Yeah, well, I mean, above all else, we just want our directors to have the guidance, so they don't, they don't go, what are we supposed to do? They can look and see, here's what we're supposed to do. This is just our first crack at it.
And, and the council still has last say.
Well, the easiest thing would be to, to just change to that, that had, if it's any matching requirement has to come in front of the council before they apply for the grant, because like, talking about if even it's a minor ten thousand dollar grant, and the council thinks, oh, we, we don't, we don't knew, need that, and to say no, it is a negative for the next time that, that department applies for that same, through that gr- same grant. So my recommendation would be, either you're gonna put ten, at least ten thousand dollars in here and put a number amount in here, or just leave one as it is, but anything after that has to come back in front of the council for approval, just before you apply on for it.
Yeah, I mean, if the project, the grant project itself wouldn't necessarily always be within the budget ordinance. I mean, that is, okay, if there's a, if there's a match for like ten thousand dollars for a given piece of equipment that we didn't even put in the budget ordinance to begin with, I think we'd wanna have preapproval of that, for that piece of equipment coming in, coming in from the grant on the, on, you know, a monetary match from us, we'd wanna have preapproval, even if it was under the ten thousand dollar amount. Because we're always, I mean, the last budget, we went through line item by line item, cutting, you know, a thousand here, two thousand here, five hundred there. I mean, when we've, you know, exercised that level of control over the budget during, during the month of June, I, I'm not, I, I think it just kind of works its way around that process by allowing a grant to go be ahead and, to, for them to go ahead and apply for the grant on the amount lower than ten, on ten thousand dollars or lower. And, uh, and then come to us finally at the end after the application has been, you know, approved and everything for us to give final approval. It just is kind of a workaround on the budget and...
Well, it's not really, I mean, I wouldn't call it workaround, because any new revenue that comes in, we need to do a budget amendment for, so basically they would be saying, you know, we feel we've got this money available to make the match, but ultimately they're gonna have to have your approval to accept the award and to bring the grant into the budget.
But it may be something that we didn't ever, that we didn't even think about putting into the budget in the first place. I mean, if it's a piece of equipment like, I don't know, something like, uh, a new kind of radio for the police department, something that we didn't even consider putting into the budget in the first place. And if we had been consulted back in June about it, we might have taken it out of the budget. If it was, if like the new radio or the fancy radio was in the budget, we might have taken it out of the budget. I mean, like I said, we've shaved two grand here and there, and a thousand here and there in the last budget, going line item by line item. It is in effect kind of a workaround, even though we give final approval and can vote it up or down after the application has been made and approved by the outside agency. Do you see what I'm saying?
You're saying that any, any grant that, uh, comes up that requires a match, even though the money is within the budget, needs to come before the council?
I think so, yeah. I think so. Especially in the sense that you can move the money around and, and, and put it on an expenditure that we may or may not have, may or may not have approved in the first place.
Some of these grants, uh, become available during, during the budget year, and they're not available when, when you're talking about, when we're talking about adopting a budget?
I think that if it's maybe not a match, that it's a hundred percent grant that they can, they can apply for and then bring it back for approval.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that, but if it's a match, I mean, I just...
We have to match it, that...
I agree.
That we, it comes back, it comes to us first.
It comes to us first, yeah.
Because of what the moving grant is. That's all right. Doesn't say, so change that to, to one.
Solid eight.
One is good, but on two and three, that's, anything comes back, any matching funds come back for approval for the council, and then four and five is still good.
Okay. Is that the wish of the council?
Yeah, anybody wanna make it official?
I'm at the motion.
Glad to make the change.
Oh, oh.
Karen?
I'll second that.
And second by Mark. Any other comments on this? Any grants that, that come up that require any kind of match needs to come before the council prior to, uh, making that request of the grant? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? Okay.
I'll see you at the next meeting. Also, before we move on, uh, Stacy and I met with our, um, financial advisor last week, and we had a series of meetings. We had meetings with the bond counsel who had expressed interest in, um, you know, becoming our bond counsel in pursuit to the council's, um, directive. Uh, we together selected bond counsel for, um, uh, any bond issues that we would do in connection with the police department or with any refinancing, and we selected Peck Schaefer out of Northern Kentucky, and they are extremely reputable. Um, I have a lot of dealings with bond counsel in my previous position, and I have a hundred percent faith in their ability, so thought we'd just give you all that update. And that's all I've got.
Andrew, can, can you tell us how the, the pricing, though, would work when it, when you have a bond counsel involved like that?
Yeah, Stacy, remind me what?
Yeah, it's, uh, very similar, if I recall. But basically with Peck Schaefer, it was kind of just like the fiscal agent, where it was a dollar amount per thousand. Um, I think they said they were in the three to four, uh, three to four dollar per thousand range, um, based on, I said these were informal interviews, but based on what we asked the other firm as well about fee, it seemed that they would be less comparable to that, so we did ask about fee just in general, but...
So say it again, they were...
We had to negotiate a contract.
They would have, when we, when we compared the two, the, the two that expressed interest, and, and believe me, the world of bond counsel is very small.
Yeah.
They were, they were the less, they were the less priced, so...
Okay.
They also account for about seventy-five, eighty percent of all city bond issuances in the state, so... The others tend to specialize in things like school bonds or bonds issued for the state, things like that. So in the world of municipal finance, they're the, they're as good as it gets, and they're highly competitive because that's all they do. They're not, they're not lawyers that just happen to do bond counsel work. They are bond counsel and nothing else, so...
Um, so you'll bring, you'll bring, we need to approve that recommendation then, or...
Well, I mean, you all...
We will bring it.
Basically say was we can work with Rock and Clear to select. We will bring a contract back at the next meeting for approval, so you'll see all of that. Um, I mean, our directive, I think, from the last time was we could work with fiscal agent to do a selection. Um, y'all didn't state, so we'll bring it back for approval just, but we will bring, bring in a municipal order for the contract at the next meeting. So you will have a chance in it, in it to approve it then.
Okay.
Just give your heads up.
Any, anything else? Where's our city engineer? Several items here had need to be approved for him. They have first reading of an ordinance to amend illicit discharge detection and elimination. This is sponsored by Mr. Finn. Tracy?
An ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand six zero zero four related to stormwater illicit discharge detection and elimination within the city of Georgetown. Summary, section one, amends ordinance number two thousand six dash zero zero four as follows. Make spelling, reference name, and address corrections throughout. Such the Georgetown Stormwater Quality Division, G Squad, as the jurisdictional stormwater authority and the issuing authority of permits and approvals for stormwater management plans. For all other areas of Scott County, the Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission is the jurisdictional stormwater authority and the issuing authority of permits and approvals for stormwater management plans. Makes changes throughout to reflect this change. Adds G Squad and Planning Commission to the list of those with enforcement authority. States that discharge which are significant contributors of pollutants to stormwater system and water courses are not exempt. Modifies exemption for non-commercial washing of vehicles to read individual residential washing of vehicles. Repels existing enforcement provisions in sections fourteen, sixteen through eighteen, and twenty through twenty-two, and replaces with new provisions. States that G Squad is responsible for enforcement. Provides that G Squad may order notices of violation, which may require monitoring and reporting, elimination of illicit connections of discharges, cessation of violating discharges, practices or operations, abatement or remediation of stormwater pollution or contamination hazards, and the restoration of any affected property. Payment of a fine to cover administrative and remediation costs and the implementation of source control or treatment VMPs. Sets NOB posting requirements. Requires violations to be corrected within five days of an NOB unless extended by G Squad due to project conditions. Otherwise, squad will issue a citation. Sets penalties and fines for citations. States that six days after a citation is issued, G Squad may issue a notice of intent to proceed with abatement and may proceed with abatement fourteen days from notice. Costs are charged to the landowner or responsible party and are enforceable through law. Provides for enforcement through injunction. Authorizes G Squad to seek immediate abatement for violations that constitute an immediate threat to the health, safety, or well-being of the public. Imposes criminal penalties for violations. States that property owner is the ultimate party responsible for assuring compliance with ordinance. Provides that violations are also deemed public nuisances subject to abatement. Section two, provides that if any portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unlawful, such portion shall be deemed to separate provision, and such holding shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, provides that all prior ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are repealed. Section four, provides that this ordinance shall become effective on passage and publication. Public real estate first time, January thirteenth, twenty fourteen.
All right. Municipal order approving and removal of wells at Sims Road landfill. Hopefully this will be step number last to, before we unload Sims Road and not be responsible for it any longer.
Mayor and council, good evening. Um, this is the last step. Removing these monitoring wells will allow us to terminate our permit to division of waste management, and then we will, then we'll be able to transfer waste services to the Bluegrass. We sent out a bid advertised in Lexington and in Georgetown. We received no responses, so I solicited three firms. Uh, Geo Drill was the one company out of Winchester, or Nicholasville. Um, they came back with the lowest cost of thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand twenty-two dollars, and I'm asking for your approval to move forward.
And you'll recall that we will only be responsible for half of that.
Right.
I'd like to thank Kyle for the work he did on this, because these folks were not easy to find. Been looking.
Waste Services be doing any post-closure care after this of the Sims Road landfill? Are they required to have any like post-closure care of the Sims Road landfill after this?
Uh, at, once the permit's terminated, there will be no requirements for post-closure care unless there's an issue that comes up.
Be thankful for this.
But we'll be done with it.
An order accepting the quote of Geo Drill Incorporated for the double culvert monitoring well abandonment, fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen project, and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the city of Georgetown issued a request for proposals for monitoring well abandonment, and whereas the city of Georgetown did not receive any bids, and whereas three firms were solicited, and Geo Drill, Inc. submitted the lowest quote in the amount of thirteen thousand twenty-two dollars. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the quote of Geo Drill, Inc., which is attached here, too, and incorporated here, and by reference, is approved, and that the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Hold on just one second. Where did that go?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Did we say Sims? It's, it's double culvert.
Yeah.
I think we said, I thought we said Sims. It's double culvert.
It says, okay, we need to change it on the agenda there.
Yeah, we said Sims. It's written that way on the agenda. Makes a lot more sense.
I didn't catch that.
I was about to say.
And there will, there will still be, I mean, there'll still be, uh, operating landfill, right?
Which one, double culvert?
Double culvert.
Uh, no, it'd be...
They're actually gonna, states consider it, gonna consider it closed.
Consider it gone until, unless there's an issue that, then they'll, they'll open a permit.
Those particular, those particular cells is what you're saying, right?
Right.
But if an issue comes up, will we be, will they come to, will they go to waste management?
Yes.
So what is the amount? I guess I'm trying to figure out, what is the amount? Is there any other, is there any other responsibility we have anywhere on that landfill as far as toward post, post-closure care on any of the other cells?
No, these are, there's three cells that we have these monitoring wells on, which are on our property, which has been purchased by Waste Services, but not transferred.
Okay.
The wells are still there.
So this ends, this will actually end? Okay.
Completely end our involvement at the double culvert landfill, one hundred percent, as far as, as far as we've been told. One hundred percent.
Cause there's been, I mean, over the years, there's been some confusion on that point. I remember some previous finance directors.
Now, we are responsible for half of this thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes, we are.
Make sure the council is aware of that in their voting.
Yeah, that doesn't mean, of course, somebody couldn't come along in five years and file a lawsuit or something like that and name us as a party, but...
Oh, absolutely.
As far as the state is concerned, as far as our ongoing...
Maintenance responsibilities.
Maintenance responsibilities.
Okay.
And the, um, the monthly, um, each a pumping cost to Georgetown Municipal Water will transfer to Waste Services as well. That's probably sixty grand a year.
Will they own, and own that equipment as part of the...
Georgetown Municipal still, will still...
Georgetown Municipal is still on it.
Motion for approval?
Motion.
Second.
Second by me. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post? Good. Thank you. Next, we have municipal order approving a request to extend the two-hour parking at three twenty East Main Street. Right down the street.
Yeah.
This is coming from the business owners. It was requested that, uh, more than two hours.
Traffic committee?
This was a request in front of traffic committee, um, and we passed it unanimously. On East Main Street, uh, just a little farther down from Planning Commission, right before the residential houses start.
Know you?
It would be about two or three, uh, parallel parking stalls would be added to a two-hour parking requirement.
Y'all know where that's available, where, where the old, um...
Y'all know where that's available, where, where the old, where.
Somebody know you?
Well, I'm trying to say, um, real estate. Denny Hamilton's real estate office was right there. It's a new business going in there. And there wasn't any parking time limit at all, so when people pulled there, they would stay, so we're just allowing her to make sure she has some parking in front of her business.
And that's consistent with the rest of Main Street?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And it's congru-, like it said, we're, we're extending the two-hour from closer to town out. Right. And it'll end at that business because there's a driveway, I believe, that goes back to some apartments and then residential houses start. So it's, makes sense to let the commercial area.
Any further comments? Need motion?
Second.
Okay, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is an MO approving a request for no parking times on Pawnee Trail.
This was also an issue that came in front of traffic committee and was approved unanimously. On Pawnee Trail, as you approach Hiawatha on the left side, vehicles tend to park too close to the intersection, which makes sight distance for vehicles leaving Pawnee onto Hiawatha difficult. Uh, this is just about thirty feet from the intersection will be no parking.
Safe view.
Safe view. And there's, there's plenty of parking along Pawnee, so.
Second.
Further comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. First reading of an ordinance.
Yeah.
To repeal. Slow children signage is sponsored by this packet.
An ordinance repealing section eighteen dash seven of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances regarding slow children signs. Whereas the city of Georgetown follows the manual of uniform traffic control devices for all traffic signs in the city, and whereas the slow children, children at play, and similar non-uniform signs are not included in the MUTCD. And whereas such signs have been shown to encourage children to play in the streets and to have little effect on driver, driving behavior, and whereas the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration, and the National Cooperative Highway Research Program all discourage the use of such signs. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city of Georgetown, section one, section eighteen dash seven of the Code of Ordinances repealed. Section two, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage and publication. Public agreement introduced and wrapped for the first time, January thirteenth, twenty fourteen.
All right. We have a second reading of these two ordinance next meeting.
Is this going to, I mean, are we gonna go out and take out the slow children?
Sadieville did it last year. Seems a bit harsh.
You can quote him, Dan.
Okay. An MO approving utility easement that's been requested.
Bill Sharp here? Bill Sharp? Uh-oh. Oh, Bill Sharp. You want me to take this or are you?
Go ahead.
Uh, well, Mr. Sharp contacted me, uh, uh, earlier last month. Uh, on Keel Ridge Drive, which is in the colony, there's an island. Um, and basically, they want to build a box that will help do, and they being, um, AT&T, uh, that will increase their internet speeds and offerings, and they're gonna essentially run a cable underneath the road. I don't know if they'll have to do a street cut, but I'm assuming they will. Um, so, so essentially that, um, they want permission to build on city property there in that median. Now, the, the tough part for me was finding out exactly who owns that little strip of land there. Um, I did pull the plat, and while those medians don't show in the plat, they're within the city's right-of-way, and there are streetlights on there, uh, so I'm assuming that the streetlights got there, they got there by easement as well. Um, so, that's it.
Who's mowing the grass?
That's a good, that's a good question, uh.
That's what we were asking.
We asked the same question.
I mean, I don't know who was.
The neighbors on the, if you're coming down Kill Ridge on the left side, this goes to the.
Not the HLA, cause there is none.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't believe we're mowing it.
Some time we mowed it.
No, we quit mowing it.
Yeah, we quit.
But we were for years.
Common areas.
Yeah.
But I guess there's an argument that we should be.
Don't even suggest it.
This twenty-five thousand six hundred dollar is bid price.
What's that? That's not.
Hmm.
I don't think that's.
The new hut.
No. That's the next one.
Oh, my bad. Sorry.
Motion for approval?
Hmm.
Do you need more information?
I think that little fellow ought to be here.
Yeah, he said he'd be here. I told him six o'clock.
Y'all agree?
AT&T.
Well, it's no different than the, than the light poles. I mean, it's.
No different. We do them all the time. I just took, I just took one we did last year for.
I'm all right.
Kentucky Lighting to do a light pole across our property.
Mayor, I'll make a, a motion for approval. If there's an issue, you all determine there's an issue, we can always readdress it.
Okay.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Connie?
There's a problem, Amy. Andrew.
Kelly, are you?
I get to deal with it, right?
Did you second it?
He did.
Okay.
Okay, no problem. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all.
And if they cut the street, there, there is a, a fee to pay, right? For street cuttings?
Absolutely.
And then they put back, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hot mix.
Won't cost us nothing.
Okay, next is the public works.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Did you?
Municipal order approving purchase of a hot box, which I think will pay for itself down the line.
No doubt. I'm asking the council that we accept this bid of, uh, twenty-six thousand five hundred twenty dollars for a hot box.
The twenty-five thousand six hundred, it doesn't include the nine twenty, or it does?
That's including the nine twenty.
Is this in your budget?
It is.
Yeah, we transferred from a couple other line items to make that.
Did. Ready to read?
Sure. An order approving the purchase of a Falcon RME asphalt hot patcher and attached tech tank for the Public Works Department and authorizing the mayor to sign all relevant documents. Whereas the purchase of an asphalt hot patcher and tech tank for the Public Works Department is necessary to keep asphalt mixed hot while repairing potholes in city streets, and whereas the council approved a funds transfer on November eleventh, twenty thirteen to allocate funds of twenty-eight two, twenty-eight thousand two hundred in the Public Works Equipment Count for such purchases, and whereas Stringville Incorporated submitted the sole bid of twenty-five thousand six hundred dollars for a Falcon RME asphalt hot patcher, and nine hundred and twenty dollars for the alternate tech tank for a total cost of twenty-six thousand five hundred and twenty. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the Georgetown City Council that the purchase of a Falcon RME asphalt hot patcher with a detached tech tank from Stringville Inc., which is attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference is approved, and the mayor is authorized to sign all relevant documents.
Discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, please.
Second.
Second. Better than filling a pothole.
Two a. No, I think Karen did.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council.
Potholes full. Okay, council comments? Hope you have as many as I did.
I just want to let you all know, I'm sorry, Brad.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, that we are working on the interlocal agreements to come back, and we've been talking about the budget numbers for the county, just want to let y'all know that, that, that's from the forefront.
And, and speaking of, of that from the county, uh, Stacy will be meeting and getting those numbers prior to their budget going out so that we'll know what's, what's going on. She's, she's gonna, uh, set up meeting with, with the judge on that.
You mean the finance committee, when you said we?
No, the interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement.
Mayor, I have a couple things I just want to toss out real quick.
Go ahead.
Um, one, and I've, I've exchanged a few emails with Stacy on this, but I want to kind of throw this to council as we get into this next budget cycle. Um, we've got two street lamps that have been out down here on West Main for quite a long time. We, we've done our best to cover them. There's no good way or pretty way of covering them. It's just ugly. There's no doubt about it. But when I ask, uh, Stacy where we were, we have to wait on insurance companies and, and that whole rigmarole. The bottom line is we're not gonna not replace them, no matter what goes on with the insurance companies. So at some point in time, I would like for council to think of a way where we can keep some money in the budget somewhere to keep one, maybe two of these things in storage somewhere. There are a long lead time on these things. I think they're about four thousand dollars, maybe somewhere in that neighborhood. Three thousand dollars. Um, if we can find some money somewhere where we could allocate, um, allocate some funds to keep one of these ready when they get knocked down. I mean, we're talking about, what, a couple of months now already on these down here? I know they were out during the Festival of the Horse.
And we do get them knocked down.
Oh, I know, and we lose two or three of them every year. So I'd like for us to be able to develop some kind of plan to have these things sitting and waiting. I know, I know Terry, you copied on that email as well.
Right.
Um, and I, I'm not, I'm not laying any blame on Terry because Terry's doing what he's.
We give you an update.
Let me give you an update on that. We, we did respond to that, and we ordered, uh, five, five of them so far, two to replace the ones. No, we got three missing, really. And then we got two we're gonna put in inventory.
Okay, good deal.
And we would like to keep two in inventory at all times. They do cost about thirty, one hundred dollars a piece.
So are we, do we have money somewhere?
He's covering the two.
Okay.
That he's gonna keep out of inventory this time, out of his funds.
Okay.
He told me he would do that. Um, out of the three that were knocked down during different accidents, uh, one, we don't, do know who knocked it down, and so we should be getting a reimbursement from their auto insurance company. The other two were hit and run. Um, I was able to finally hear back, and our insurance company denied the claim because they're not listed property, so I'm working with our insurance agent, uh, to get a listing of all of those under our property insurance.
Okay, perfect.
So that in the future, um, even if we do have them in stock, then we can get reimbursed.
Great.
Those expenses.
Have a citizen come forward and pay for one with the check.
Oh, really?
Yep.
Wow.
That was nice.
Unfortunately, the others, we, we didn't, couldn't. Didn't know who knocked them down, and they knocked down two and one. One fell swoop.
Unfortunately, there is a long lead time on these.
Yeah.
It'll be about the last of February or the first weekend in, in, in March before they come in.
Good deal.
He has like orders.
The other thing that I kind of wanted to bring to everybody's attention is in relation to the center of town. We, well, more specifically in relation to the checkpoint program that was at the center of town. Um, they were, the, the, the judge allowed them to go out to the county blue building out of county park, which wasn't ideal, obviously, for them, and has really hurt the program i- in terms of numbers significantly. Um, but I got a call Friday. They are anticipating getting a letter from Parks and Rec, um, terminating their contract with them and giving them thirty days to get off the premises out there. Um, from talking to Ms. Ruby today and someone else last week, if they are forced out in thirty days, they will have to shut the program down because there's nowhere else. They have another place that they are, that they're negotiating with. But in order to get state inspections and so on and so forth, to be able to move into that other place, um, obviously, it takes time. Um, I would like for council to support some type of communication with Parks and Rec, uh, requesting them to at least extend them through the end of the school year. They are a school, a school schedule-based program. Um, for them to be able to get out in thirty days is going to be, I mean, it, it's going to, it's gonna put the program under, is essentially what's gonna happen. Um, so I, I talked with a member of the, with Parks and Rec Board last week as well, and they basically said, you know, they're becoming a little more of a scheduling issue than they had anticipated. Um, you know, we've kind of drug this thing out for two years now on, on this building, so I think we're somewhat responsible for what happens to the program. But in the same rights, I think we, we, I would like to be able to communicate with them kind of from a unified perspective and say, hey, you know, is there anything that we can do to help facilitate to allow them the contract at least through the end of the school year? Um, like she, I mean, she, she flat out told me today that if they're, if they're forced to move in the next thirty, forty-five days, then they would have to shut the program down. And this is something that a couple of years ago had just shy of a hundred kids in it. And now they're down to like less than twenty.
Refresh, refresh our memory just a little bit. What's the, uh, what's the funding? Do you know?
The funding.
Where do they get, yeah.
Check, United Way.
All of it comes from United Way?
And they're currently paying, uh, they were paying at Center of Town. I think they were paying seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to Parks and Rec for that. Um, they're paying them five hundred dollars a month now for the, for the blue building out of the county park. Um, they, like I say, they have another place on tap that they've been talking with that they think they're going to be able to move to for the following school year. Um, but they, they could potentially be, be asked to, to move out in the next thirty days.
You want us from City Hall to fix up a letter?
That's what I would like, I would like, you know, and providing council agrees with it. I mean, I, I would just like for some form of communication to Parks and Rec to say, hey, listen, we, we at least accept a portion of this, you know, from, uh, from our perspective. Can you please allow them to stay in through the end of the school year?
Why are they, why are they proposing to, to ask them to leave? There's gotta be a reason.
I, I was told it was just causing scheduling problems. Now, when I talked to Ms. Ruby this afternoon, she said, Brad, anytime they have asked us, and they frequently rent the place out. Um, but she told me, she said, anytime we have been asked to, you know, to evacuate for, for some kind of a, a program or whatever, we've done that. Um, so I'm not sure, you know, from, like I say, that my communication with the board member was just basically, it's becoming a scheduling issue. It's been two years. We have no idea what's gonna happen with the Center of Town building. So they're make, they made the decision at the last board meeting to terminate their contract.
I personally, I'd, I'd kind of like to get a little bit more information, Mayor. Maybe have you, usually, you know, Parks and Rec or whomever it may be, I mean, they're obviously a, a branch of us, you know, they usually have some justification for what they do. And I hate for us to go, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I support the idea, the concept, the whole, the whole idea. But I, I, I think it'd be appropriate for the mayor to make contact with them and just, just talk, communicate. I think that's the key.
As I said, I haven't been contacted.
Sure, sure. And I, and I hadn't, I didn't figure that you had.
No, did not. But I'll, I'll follow up and, and get the full information.
How far along? I mean, I guess this is a good time to ask about the Center of Town project, but if we could find out exactly what's going on, I mean.
Well, we've, we had our architect go in just past Friday, I think it was.
Yeah, he went in with his engineers. We have a meeting scheduled, Kyle, myself, and Jerry with, um, Fitzsimmons this Wednesday to get a draft report and draft cost estimate. So we'll get with him and see if there's anything he's missing to make that a final report. If there's not, if it's just a draft report for our review, then we could possibly bring it to you on the twenty-seventh and.
I was hopeful, hopeful that we'll get some information to you in the next council meeting.
I mean, the primary, to me, the way I read council, I, you know, you know, you guys know I feel about, you know, going forward on the Center of Town project as far as, you know, how much money it's made cost and whatever. But I mean, the primary reason that we seem to be doing this, at least from a programming standpoint with these checkpoint. And I guess, you know, I would like, kind of like what Brad said, to find out exactly from Parks and Rec what the problem is as far as renting the blue building out there. I mean, and if there's anything we can do, but. We can. Um, yeah, I'm, I guess I'm looking forward to the, to hear about the cost estimate for the Center of Town as well.
So we'll see what he has to say Wednesday, and like I said, depending on how much more information he needs, we'll hopefully.
The other question is, I mean, and I, I don't know from the standpoint of if there were a hundred children before we had the problems at the Center of Town related to the windstorm. If there were a hundred children enrolled in checkpoint, and now they're down to twenty, what are the other eighty children doing? I mean, have they gone on to other programs? Are they in the school system? I mean, I think that's, that's another question I might ask by Parks and Rec. I mean, because if there's an actual need that we're ignoring by not having the building open, then I think, you know, we've got a rationale, but if this program's kind of going away just naturally because other people are finding other avenues to, other avenues to do that same sort of thing as far as what checkpoint does for families. I mean, I, I think that's one of the basic questions, is how much of a need is there for the sort of programming? of programming that used to go on at the center of town?
Well, I know, and, I mean, we've met with Jerry, and of course, I think we've had a couple of communications from the Parks and Rec Board of their intent to put their own programming back in that building, and I know it's been sent out to all of you, and so I'm sure I'll still have it on file if you need me to resend it, but, you know, and it's Jerry's working with them to, with that Mr. Fitzsimmons.
She was leaving checkpoint down there, too.
As far as center of town.
I guess I'm asking, I'm not asking about desire, I'm asking about need. I mean, of course, if we call up a given, if we give, call up a given department and say, we're fixing up a building for you, how do you feel about it? They'll say, uh, fine. I mean, they're not, they're not gonna turn us down, but, I mean, I think it's important to have Parks and Rec at the next meeting when we hear the numbers, so that we can evaluate whether or not there's an actual need there to be addressed by spending the dollars on the center of town repairs. That's, that's the main thing.
Haven't, I mean, haven't they done that already? Didn't she come with a whole pamphlet one night with all the programming that was in there, and she was intending to put back in there? You know, I, I hate to keep inviting them in to regurgitate the same information.
I'm sure she'll be here, there's no doubt.
I think it's just a refreshing thing, Brad, and the other programs, I mean, they're not even up and running or doing something else that was in there as well. Kyle would be like, like to know what those other programs are doing, like the cloggers and the different things like that.
I think with, with checkpoint in particular, and I know it's not a Parks and Rec program, when, you know, when they lose forty percent of their people the first year that they have to move, you can pretty much tell it was a, it was a location issue at that point, and then the numbers have just continued to dwindle down, right? So...
Probably had a lot of walkers or...
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, absolutely.